The whole meeting for Wednesday, April 20th. I thank those councilors that are present this afternoon. We have Councilors Woods, Pro Tim Smithman, Counselor O'Quinn, and Chair Wardian Alexander. At this time, councilors, I say, I don't have a quorum, so we're not able to approve the minutes. So we'll go ahead and just call up our updates. And first, we have Mr. Tim Gambrell, who's the Chief Planner of PEP, and he's here to provide us a requested update on community framework plans. Hello, Mr. Gambrell.
Good afternoon. As you mentioned, my name is Tim Gambrell. I serve as Chief Planner for the City of Birmingham. And I just want to give you a little update on the framework plan process and where we are at this current point in time. I think most of you know North Birmingham, Five, or not Five Points West, it's actually called the Western Area, North Birmingham, the Western Area, Tittisville, the northeastern part of the city, southwestern part of the city, all have framework plans that have been adopted by the Planning Commission, endorsed by City Council, and their rezoning plans have been adopted. And that represents about half of the city that we've rezoned to the new city, or to the new zoning ordinance.
Mr. Gambrell, do you mind giving us those communities again?
Sure.
Those sections, thank you.
Yeah, it's North Birmingham. The Western Area includes Five Points West, Smithfield, and West End. And you have Tittisville. Gosh, the Northeast area included, um... I'm going to space on the communities. I'll have to get back with you on the communities. I know it's Huffman, um, I believe Roebuck. But I'll have to get back with you on the specific communities.
Okay. But did you just give us the...
Yeah, and the Southwest likewise, it's, you know, Oxmoor, Brownville, Griselli. But I'd have to get back with you on the specific communities on those. Of course, they're all, you know, everything is in our website at ImagineBHAM.com. All the plan documents are there for you to take a look at. You know, Ensley Pratt, of course, it's just Ensley and Pratt Community. That plan has been adopted by Planning Commission. There is a recommendation for rezoning by both the Planning Commission and the communities involved there. And there's a plan to adopt the zoning and seek endorsement of the council this fall. That particular rezoning plan recommends using character code districts. We have not adopted the character code yet, but we intend to do that in September this year. And so when that, the character code's adopted, we'll then seek adoption for the Ensley Pratt rezoning. The Eastern Area, which is made up of East Birmingham, Woodlawn, Airport Hills, and Eastlake, that plan is in its final form. We've been working with East Birmingham Community and Eastlake Community to finalize their rezoning plan. And when that's done, you know, Woodlawn and both Airport Hills and Woodlawn have already approved their rezoning plans. But when we've, you know, developed consensus with East Birmingham and Eastlake, then we'll move forward to the adoption phase for that plan. Likewise, Northside/Southside is in its final form. We've made presentation of that final document to the communities, and we've presented their rezoning plan to each community at one occasion. You know, the easy excuse, of course, has been COVID. And so now that, you know, we're kind of in a better situation, we'll be moving forward with both of those communities to review those zoning, rezoning plans and work with them until we've developed consensus on those rezoning plans. And once we have, you know, we'll move to adoption phase on those.
Okay.
Of course, Northside and Southside are just one community each, the Northside and the Southside community. And then the Southern Area Plan is the one that's most recently finished, and this is the ninth of nine, by the way. And so that includes the Red Mountain Community, Crestline Crestwood. And that plan is in its final draft form. We made a presentation to P&amp;Z last week on that document. And we'll be scheduling a meeting for kind of a plan reveal to the community in probably the last week of May. And once that's, you know, that meeting, you know, we'll present the plan, present the future land use plan, and then ask for comments and feedback. You know, we'll respond to that, you know, by either making those, you know, making some necessary changes based on community support. And then in June, we would look to schedule our first community meetings, you know, to review the zoning plan for the first time. And so it's like I always mention when I have those meetings is, you know, we're going to start a conversation. And so we're going to make a presentation, we're going to hear comments, and then we'll expect, you know, we won't take a vote on the first meeting. We'll have to come back, respond to any comments that we get, and make a second presentation. You know, some communities have been willing to vote second meeting. Some have taken three or four. And so, you know, the same process will take place there. We'll meet with each community independently, you know, and just work with them until we develop consensus. And once we have, you know, we'll go through the adoption process again. So, you know, the plan itself is adopted by the Planning Commission. They make a recommendation on zoning. And then we would take it to City Council to endorse the plan and then adopt the zoning. It's generally about a three-month process, just like a rezoning case.
Madam President, I think we need to roll again now that we have a quorum.
Yes, yes. Thank you. I'll just note that Mrs. Abbott has joined us. We have a quorum. I'll come back and let him finish, and then we'll go back and do the adoption of the minutes. Go ahead.
And then the last comment I was going to make is that for each of these plans, you know, as we finish, as we get them adopted, we've been developing what we call Implementation Committee.
Yes.
And so they're like a stakeholder group that we work with to kind of identify, you know, their priority short-term goals and then help to work with them to identify partners, try and build capacity to try and realize those goals. And then we also kind of, you know, tell them that, you know, really, they're their own best advocate. And so we try to get them to advocate for themselves, you know, and their needs, you know, whether it's the administration or the council. And of course, you know, every different committee, you know, is kind of in a different position, you know, based on, you know, the people that are there and, you know, kind of their abilities. And so, you know, some immediately, you know, will establish a 501(c)(3). You know, others are just trying to figure it all out. And so it's kind of a broad range of, you know, kind of what we, you know, do with them. At present, there are implementation committees for North Birmingham, Five Points West, which is actually made up of both Five Points West and West End, Tittisville, and Ensley Pratt. Those are all kind of actively meeting. We've made attempts in Northwest and Southwest, Northeast and Southwest, excuse me, and initiated implementation committees, but they have, they sort of stopped meeting. And so we're working to re-initiate those committees. And then, you know, as plans are adopted, you know, we'll establish implementation committees for the other framework areas. And like I've mentioned before, ImagineBHAM.com is a website you can go to. It's a resource for all of the framework plan documents. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. Appreciate this update. I know that we do have some questions, and I do have some. So I'll start first. I believe Dr. O'Quinn had some questions.
Yeah. One of the things I'm particularly interested in is the rezoning component of all of these framework plans, and in particular, the Western Area. If I recall correctly, we got all the way to the council meeting with the proposed rezoning for the Western Area. And then there were some, you know, feedback from the community that indicated that we needed to go back and do more engagement. I can't recall how long ago that was, but it's been a while. The, so, you know, I'm particularly eager to see, you know, us kind of move that forward. But in the meantime, for individuals, you know, that are looking for new opportunities, are we kind of communicating that? In particular, I'm thinking about, one of the things that I'm most excited about is there's the, like, the Hardware Park area of Smithfield, where we're going from general business and commercial zoning to mixed-use zoning. And, you know, I think that's going to open up a lot of opportunities over there. You know, are we kind of communicating that out, or, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, really, the only way we're communicating is through the community process. You know, through the communities and through our advertising that we would normally do. But, and I also would mention, we actually did adopt, we adopted Smithfield, Five Points West, and West End rezoning. Those have all been adopted.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And the process you were talking about, we did go back in certain cases and do more engagement. But all of those have been adopted.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Those are in place. But, yeah, so primarily, though, our way of reaching out is, you know, through the community and in advertising that we normally would do. And so, you know, every property owner within a community will receive two letters notifying them of this process. So, you know, we diligently mail out, you know, thousands of letters, you know, every time we do one of these, twice, you know, to notify them of the Planning Commission meeting and then to notify them of the City Council meeting. That's kind of how we get the word out.
Okay.
We did, and I think initially, our first couple of times, we did some workshops where we invited people to come to council chambers and workshop. And we really didn't get a whole lot of participation that way. And so we abandoned that process. And so we just rely on, you know, what's statutorily required.
Okay.
Thank you, Doctor.
I was just going to allow other folks opportunity to ask questions.
Any other questions, Counselor, Counselor Abbott?
Yeah. I don't really have a question to ask, except that, you know, one of my big concerns is that we have so many residents who are not tech-savvy, you know, and we count so much on our computers to communicate maps and things like that. And there are just so many people in Birmingham that don't have access. So what kind of things can we do better to contact those people? Because, you know, you send them a letter, and that is, that's wonderful. It comes right to their mailbox. But stuff from the city looks like it might be junk mail, you know, and so a lot of people won't even open it. And I realize that you can't cure non-participatory people. But some, there has to be some way to help people who are not on the Internet to get information. I mean, in the old days, we must have had a way to do it because we didn't used to have all this stuff.
Sure. Yeah, well, we do, I mean, you know, we offer, obviously, you know, our contact information in the letter, you know, so they can easily call us. But then also, you know, the maps are always provided at the clerk's office and the second-floor counter. You know, so if they do want to come in, they can come in. You know, we do offer our phone numbers. Like you say, it is posted online. So that's primarily our way of communicating.
But we are just so dependent on the online stuff. And all of us up here, we're all taken care of.
Sure.
But we, especially our senior citizens, some of them know more about their computer than I do. And then a whole lot of them don't even have one. And so that, it's just a concern. I haven't come up with a solution in my little head, but it is a problem because they're just sort of left out of the loop until they suddenly find out something happened.
I would report that we do receive many calls, you know. When the notices are mailed, you know, we'll receive hundreds of phone calls. Generally, people saying, you know, what is this and what's happening to my property? But we do receive quite a few calls.
Well, thank you.
Madam President, I just want to maybe offer up a solution that can hopefully close that gap. Mr. Gambrell, I don't know if we're using our CRRs as a mechanism to get the word out during the neighborhood meetings. I think that's something that we can just rely on them via Alice Williams to make sure that the OCRs that attend those neighborhood meetings get the word out to them. And then we use word of mouth, which is free, to get the word out to people who come to the framework plan meetings. That's just a thought.
Sure. Yeah, we do rely on the CRRs when we're doing meetings heavily.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn.
Yeah. So just a general statement for anybody who may be watching the livestream is that these are really hefty documents. I just recently looked at the Southern Area Draft Framework Plan, and it's extensive, so packed with tons of information. And, you know, for the community members, I think, you know, we need to reiterate that these are like roadmaps for those areas of town. These are intended to be policy documents that city staff, councilors, others refer to in the years to come to guide their decision-making. So these are not just, you know, documents that sit on a shelf. They are actively used, and it is really important that the community is engaged, and these implementation committees are particularly important. So if you haven't had an opportunity and you're, you know, concerned about the future trajectory of your neighborhood, this is one, you know, document that you need to familiarize yourself with. I can't, you know, emphasize how important that is. I did want to ask you about not a framework plan, but another planning document that we've created recently, which is the City Center Master Plan. That has been approved by the Planning Commission. But that is not one that has come before the City Council for, you know, any type of, you know, confirmation or adoption. And that's something that I think is, would be valuable. I know the previous 2009 City Center Master Plan didn't get that stamp of approval, and it caused some issues down the road with some of the other projects that have come along. So I'm very interested in the City Council being presented with the City Center Master Plan and us, you know, giving our stamp of approval to it so that it can be, you know, part of the official policy of the city moving forward for, you know, the next several years until we create another City Center Master Plan.
Yeah, I think what I would do is just work with leadership, you know, to make that happen. I know we've discussed that very issue. We need to do that. So we'll work with leadership on that and discuss that further.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from other councilors? Counselor Woods, any questions?
I did have a question. You did mention the Southwest Plan. Of course, I'm very interested in that one. And I had thought, you said it has already been approved, or is it in a...
Yes, ma'am. It's been adopted, and the zoning plan was adopted.
Okay. Because I do know that I was contacted by someone, and they said they wanted to, they needed to sort of bring the committee back together again. I think they hadn't met a few times before, since COVID. And I just noticed a few names on the list of the current committee. They're no longer with us. So my question is, is that committee, once that ends, then you go to the IC, and then you could be able to get other people? So maybe they're ready now for that IC phase?
Yeah, that is one of the communities that we've been actively working to reengage.
That's the word I was looking for, reengage.
I think that, yeah, we'll probably end up doing a strategy similar to we have another... You know, we'd like to have the committee work for the entire community. But it's kind of like the framework plans. The reason for the framework plan is, it's kind of like Counselor Quinn is saying, that these are like mini-comp plans. And the reason to break the city up into the different areas is that each part of the city has different issues and different concerns. And so it's similar in the Southwest area. You know, one neighborhood is probably very different from the others. And so, you know, I think in those situations, you know, we have made accommodations to the neighborhood and say, okay, we'll have a separate implementation committee here. We'll probably follow that strategy in the Southwest, where, you know, one neighborhood has different concerns from the remainder. And so we'll probably end up with two different committees there, I think, is our strategy.
And excuse me for not knowing the entire process, but how are residents, are they appointed to this committee? Or is it just people that come in and work with the team?
And what we did initially, as we would go through the planning process, and, you know, we would have sign-ins, and, you know, we would ask, you know, as you sign in, you know, please check if you want to participate going forward. And we would maintain those records through an Excel spreadsheet and reach out to people that way. I think that, you know, we'll probably have to reengage at this point, you know, go back to the neighborhoods and maybe go back to, you know, some of the other stakeholder groups and, you know, see who wants to participate. And I think we'll probably end up having to do some strategy similar to that.
All right. Thank you very much. And with piggybacking on Counselor O'Quinn's question, I know you said the City Center Master Plan. Is that something, where are we with that? Or what's the timeframe that we might see more information or action regarding that?
Yeah, it was adopted by the Planning Commission roughly two years ago.
Okay.
And so, yeah, it, I mean, statutorily, it has effect, you know, as a part of our comprehensive plan.
Okay.
As a component of our master plan. The state would call it a master plan. So it's sort of a component of that. It has been adopted. But we do need to, I think, and we've talked about it internally, is make a presentation to the council, educate the council on it, and ask for endorsement.
I think that would be a good idea that we could put on for a future committee of the whole. So let's work together to see what the timing of that could be. And definitely, we'd like to bring you back and have that conversation. Mrs. Abbott?
Yeah, the City Center Master Plan was adopted so long ago that I'm having trouble remembering what's in it. And I'm on the Planning Commission, but two years, you know, a lot of water has flowed over the dam and under the bridge over two years. So I really think, and I know I'm inviting more work for us, but all of these plans, you know, they need to have reviews periodically just to remind everyone what we're supposed to be focusing on. Because that's always been the criticism of all our planning processes, is we make beautiful plans, and then the book is up on the shelf, you know, maybe the top shelf gathering dust. Until it's so out of date, it doesn't matter. So I think even for members of the City Council, you know, we need reminders too. But certainly, the citizens who participated in those meetings, they've gone on with their lives. And so it seems that there should be an annual review or maybe every two years have a review or do something where people are reminded of, hey, we said we were going to do this in the Western Community, but we've never done anything because we forgot. You know, it just, the plans are great, but you have to actually use them and implement them and have people in, you know, you need to have some cheerleaders, which is why the implementation committees are so, so important. Somebody needs to be the cheerleader for making something happen. Because, you know, you know about those squeaky wheels. So it's just a thought. I know it's more work on you, and it's more work on us, and I guess it's more work on everybody. But if you have a plan and you don't ever look at it, it doesn't do any good.
I'm going to agree with Mrs. Abbott on this because I found that when I actually utilized the Southwest Framework Plan when I was developing and going out for the UNOM grant and for that organization. And so they actually read that and found that they saw more information about what are the needs of that community, what are the needs of that area. And so I did have a question related to how often do we not dust it off, but is there a timeframe when we go back and look at it again? Because some of those components, as even looking at it pre-COVID, some of those components were a little bit different or maybe different needs now.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, they're kind of living documents. So, you know, periodically, yeah, there are needs, you know, to amend, especially, you know, changed condition, you know, some drastic change that's happened, occurred, time in itself. And so, you know, the Comprehensive Plan was adopted in 2013. You know, many cities, you know, depending on development changes, you know, will, you know, renew their comp plans every five to 10 years. You know, and the horizon, on the horizon for the plan is 20. But, so those are discussions that we would be having, you know, when is the opportune time to reimagine our Comprehensive Plan? I think, you know, that would sort of set the stage for how we would move forward with other, these documents. I would just mention, too, that we're, you know, currently involved in a process where we want to, you know, look at existing land use every three to five years. And so we're doing that now. We started with the original Framework Plan and going through the entire city over the course of several years. It'll take several years for us to do it, but we're engaged in that process now. So there's some, you know, updating going on as we speak.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments, councilors? Well, we do appreciate you bringing us this update, and we'll be looking forward to the other information, especially on the City Center Master Plan. And we'll work with you and the chief and come up with the time, reasonable time that we could bring that back to the committee. Thank you very much, Mr. Gambrell.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilors, if we could go back on our agenda, and now that we have a quorum, I'd like to ask if you've had an opportunity to review our minutes from our meeting of March 28th? If I could get a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
I have a question.
Yes, any discussion? Go ahead, Mrs. Abbott.
Okay. We have in the questions from Counselors section, we have all the questions that the councilors asked, but the administration gave us answers, and there are no answers in here. Did y'all notice that? It has a list of all the questions, but there are no answers. And I know that poor Chaz sat over there and attempted to answer our question. And there's no answers in the minutes, which means that anyone who reads them is going to think nobody answered our questions. Or maybe the administration was going to answer later.
And I see what you're saying in there because we did go ahead as a committee, and we approved those funding requests based on what those questions were. So I thought at each juncture, we were able to get some concurrence that the information we requested had been answered, but I see it's...
I mean, if you, we could answer them again. We have no problem answering the questions again. I know some of these were just outlining areas that had to have follow-up, but, I mean...
But a lot of them were...
I just, I never seen them in the minutes like this, but that's fine.
Well, it is different. But anyway, maybe, maybe if Mr. Mitchell, if our chief, was willing to just give us little quick answers. Where are our street sweepers out back, you know?
I will formalize this in a memo and send it to the entire council just so it can be for your, you know, inboxes. And then I'll send them to Ms. Kidd so she can update the minutes for it to reflect. So you don't have to vote on it per se today, and then we'll update it once we supply you with the answers.
Yeah, what we can do then, make these minutes more inclusive of the action that was taken. I don't mind if we delay this until our next council meeting, and we get the response back from administration. That'll be fine. And we could just delay this until our next committee of the whole. Thank you.
Because actually, this is a resource for us when we can't remember what the answer was.
I totally agree. I agree with that. I have no problem answering the questions.
So can we vote and just make a motion for a delay to approve minutes after we receive the...
I'm going to delay until the next committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll delay these. We gave Chaz some homework. Thank you.
He needed something to do tonight.
Going to the next section of our agenda, councilors, we do have a disparity study update that is going to be reported to us this afternoon by Mr. Coriate Hauser, Deputy Director of IEO. Mr. Hauser?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Coriate Hauser. I serve as Deputy Director for the Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. So really quick, in 2020, the city contracted with Griffin and Strong to perform a disparity study. So over the past almost two years, they've been doing that study. Primarily due to COVID, it's taken a little longer because normally, they come into a city and sit down with staff. But we've had to sort of do it virtually, send the information. So happy to say today that we are nearing the completion of that. And at our next Committee of the Whole meeting, we'll have an actual detailed presentation with the Griffin and Strong team, who will walk you through all of the data, all the complete study, any questions that you have around the analysis, regression analysis, the data, the market that they studied, all of that can be answered at that time. But I will say, there's sort of three parts to this study. So there's calculation of available women and minority-owned businesses, services compared to what we're utilizing. women and minority-owned businesses services compared to what we're utilizing. They conducted interviews for anecdotal evidence, and then they performed some aggression analysis to just rule out anything that may not be relevant to a disparity in the potential marketplace. So, some of those recommendations of findings will be vetted through the legal department, and then we will come back with a full presentation for the council to ask questions directly to the team. And then the administration will tag that with implementation strategies of how we actually not let this sit on the shelf.
Would it be possible, I'd like to ask that, to prepare us for that presentation, if we could get those materials prior to the meeting? Is that possible?
Yeah.
Do you have a PowerPoint or some type of report? And then that way, we could be prepared for our questions. Or maybe if you even wanted to give us a timeline to send those questions back to you, and that way, we could move the meeting a little bit further ahead, or people would have that understanding of what your findings are.
Absolutely. Yeah.
And for the, just for the public, I know two years ago, you know, life has changed for so many of us with COVID. Can you just explain for the public how we got to this, is wanting this as a city, and how we initiated this as a project?
So, part of the Woodford administration was to, you know, make sure that we provide opportunities for women and minority-owned businesses. And so, to sort of legally stand up a race-conscious or gender-conscious program, we had to go through a disparity study to show that what we have available is actually what we're not utilizing. And so, they were able to sort of see that on a larger scale between Jefferson and Shelby County. So, it's not just the city of Birmingham that they analyzed, it's Jefferson and Shelby County. And so, they're able to sort of show that 75, or near 75% of our spending happens within Jefferson and Shelby County. So, does that match, the availability and utilization, does that match? And so, that's what they were able to see. That's what they're finalizing now so that they can show us what those results are. And then based on that, we will be able to set up new legislation with the council's help. We'll be able to set up policies, procedures, staff training, all of that, to then move that needle in the right direction legally. So, it won't necessarily be an encouragement anymore. It'd be a legal stance that we can take to make sure that minority participation is happening in city vending.
Well, let me ask you, do you think you'd be ready by next month to present us with this information? So, can we go ahead?
I will say, I did contact the Griffin and Strong team and said, hey, here's the date that we're looking at, which is the next Committee of the Whole. So, they're getting their team together to make sure everybody can be represented. Because they have different people who are experts in different fields. So, they're just trying to make sure the whole team is ready. So, I'll come back with the confirmation on that.
Okay. Because I think it will be worthy enough that it may have its own, just be that entire agenda for that particular meeting, based on, I know the interest of the council. And I do just want to say that I, yes, sir?
No, I don't, I did not mean to cut you off, Madam President, but I think, as Mr. Hauser noted, that we'll do our best to give you some type of synopsis.
Okay.
Because there's a very thick document for you to read and at least give us a heads up on any questions that you may have before the Committee of the Whole meeting in May to make it more succinct. So, we'll provide that to the council.
Okay.
Yeah, the executive summary.
Yes.
Right now, as they finalize, the executive summary is like 30 pages. So, that's-
Maybe it's an executive summary of the executive summary.
So, we'll give you guys plenty of notice and time to digest and have appropriate questions.
Thank you. Councilors, did you have any questions for Mr. Hauser? Yes, sir, Dr. Quinn?
Is the, did you say the geographic area included Jefferson and Shelby County?
Yes.
Okay. So, that, the entire county, is that the totality of the geographic area?
Yeah. So, it's Jefferson and Shelby County. And that's primarily to show sort of a locale. So, 75% of our spending is within Jefferson. They're able to see sort of the total landscape throughout all the counties of what's available. And then base that on what we're utilizing and is there disparity between the two?
Okay. And for the, for the businesses, they, you know, I would assume that they don't necessarily have to be located within, you know, headquartered or whatever, have a business address within the city of Birmingham. It's more of a geographic area. And for those businesses, do they, you know, are we only looking at the, like, the certified women and minority-owned businesses?
The businesses that they chose were the businesses that have done business with the city over the last five years. So, that's where the list came from. But then what they did was go to the state list, BCI, the counties list, every list that they can get their hands on to see whether they were certified minority and women-owned. And some of them, they actually, they told us in the first history of them doing disparity study, the data was a little off. And so, some of them, they actually called up or actually went on the website to actually see. So, a lot of that validation was happening either through lists or them calling themselves to say, hey, you know, we're doing a disparity study and this is what the information is. A little bit of both.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. Any other questions, comments? Abbott?
I think a disparity study is a great idea. The thing that I don't want to see is our money going to other states, to other, you know, other people's minority and women-owned business. I really want to see them go to ours. You know, even the ones with, and I realize the ones within the city of Birmingham get a, when they bid, Birmingham businesses get a break, I think, still, don't they? They used to have a few percentage points they were given on their bids because they were located in the city of Birmingham. Are we still doing that?
Good question.
You don't know?
I mean, I will find out. I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah. Well, I mean, for many years, maybe somebody stopped it while we weren't looking, but for many years, a Birmingham, a city of Birmingham business got a little few percentage point rate because they were a Birmingham business.
I think it's, I want to say it's 3%, but it may be 5%. Yeah. Our person's department does try to do their best due diligence when we bid things out to make sure that everything is Birmingham-based. But I believe the state statute gives us, and I will find out and let you know, I think it's between 3% or 5% difference. So, say if somebody in Hoover was 5% less, I mean, 5% more or less than somebody from Birmingham, we would award the Birmingham bidder over a Hoover bidder.
Yeah. I mean, that was what we used to do, but-
I think we, I think we still do, but I'll confirm. I add that to my-
But, yeah, to your homework, because, you know, I'm just really interested in our own people-
Correct.
-benefiting because they're our own people. I mean, you know, we want our own businesses to thrive more than we want somebody in Atlanta.
Yeah. And I'll add this. I think part of what the disparity study does show us is what's available in our market. And so, we'll be able to see what's available in the city limits, what's available in Jefferson, what's available in Shelby. Because, you know, based on the needs and the services, it may not be in the city, but it's in the county. But the disparity study will sort of show us, here's what we have available here, and then here's how we have to sort of go out outside of the city. On top of that, some of the programs will include some coaching opportunities so that those cities that are ready to be vending with the city, they're able to help get ready. So, there'll be a lot of programs around getting businesses ready to vend with the city. So, that number and aspirations should change.
Well, and if there was a benefit to being a Birmingham business, more businesses might move into Birmingham and take up all these vacant storefronts and things. Because there's a benefit, you get more business if you're in Birmingham than you get if you're in Podunk Color. So-
I'll say, think about the city of Atlanta before the airport. I know we hear that a lot, but that, this, this team is the one that orchestrated the city of Atlanta's contract compliance program. And so, prior to sort of the airport being built, there was not a whole lot of race and gender-conscious programs. They did a disparity study, and now, I mean, we see the benefit that it created for minority and women-owned businesses. So, we're in, we're in their hands to sort of change the landscape of Birmingham and how we vend with minority and women-owned businesses.
Good. Thank you.
Dr. Quinn?
Yeah. So, I'm just curious, there's now a private sector initiative called Prosper Birmingham that's seeking to, you know, accomplish sort of the same goals. Are Griffin and Strong kind of informed? You know, is there cross-communication going on there?
There is a little bit. I will say that the difference is, we're able to set the legislation, you know, with the council. Prosper is sort of initiative-driven on the other side of businesses to say, hey, the city has available funds for minority businesses. We're going to help you actually get ready to be able to contract with the city. So, we do work in collaboration, but their involvement on this particular study was very minimum. But once we have adopted it, set the legislation, they do become a part of the equation to help the ecosystem really take advantage of the program.
Excellent.
Thank you. Because I was hopeful that that was sort of a, would be a fallout of that, or would be a result of that. Because if we talk about, we don't have, you said, what is available and what do we use, what are we not using, then it looks like Prosper could, Birmingham Prosper could-
Yes, absolutely. I mean, you know, we can't do it all here at the city. And so, we need partners like Prosper who understand what is available here at the city. And then they're able to go out and actually tell the businesses to get ready and sort of tell them what's here. And sometimes walk them through that process to make sure they're bidding accurately to get those contracts.
Correct. Mr. Woods, did you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I would too, like, if you could follow up with the Chief of Operations to ensure we get any information on current active local preference programs. So, greatly appreciate that. But no, really excited about the program, the disparity study one and getting to this point. I think, you know, this is one thing that's personally really important to me. So, I'm excited to, city administration kind of initiated and to be right here on the cusp of getting that document and get to review it. So, I've had some time, like I said, in between December 2020 and today. So, we're on, we're closer to one year than two. So, but yeah, look at what, look at what Atlanta did, look at what Memphis has done. Memphis kind of modeled us. Like, we did one, didn't put it to work, came back and did another one, and then they did put it to work. And they did have some really strong results from that. So, like I said, look forward to really getting into the details on it and seeing that and going forward. But just wanted to, one, just say, excited to be at this point and appreciate all the work that really the team has put in to get here. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Also, wanted to reiterate that information on the local preference ordinance that we, or information that we needed from the chief.
Thank you. I see the chief is-
Then we'll let that fall through the cracks.
Finally recognized. Chief Mitchell?
Thank you. I talked to our purchasing agent, Ms. Carmen Jones. She's going to send me the code is 5%, but once she sends me that, I'll forward it to the committee, well, to the council.
We'll get that.
I'm going to make sure.
We'll be sure we reflect that in the minutes that we requested that. Thank you.
And then we got answers, too.
Pro Tem, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Hauser. I do join the group here today in thanking you for, I know it was a very something that councilors wanted to hear about. And so, we look forward to getting that more detailed report. And we will work to provide questions to you ahead of time so that that meeting will be very efficient for us. All right. Thank you very much. Councilors, any other items or discussion for this afternoon? Can I have a motion?
Can I have a-
Yes, ma'am.
Can I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Will our next Committee of the Whole include a discussion of recycling? Mr. Mitchell, do you know?
We can make that, we can make that happen.
Yeah. Because we received that information from the mayor, but I think it needs a very thorough discussion.
That was the City Hall Expansion Program, so that's different from recycling, but we can-
I know, but recycling was suggested to be diminished pretty significantly and-
I know. We talked about PIC, but, I mean, I'll yield to the president and pro tem. I'm fine with whatever the-
Probably just start with PIC and then go Committee of the Whole.
That works for us.
Yep.
Want to do it that way?
Yeah, we can do it that way. Just to vet it out and everything.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And then I know you had another one, but we will put that on our list and move forward with that. Thank you. If I can entertain a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your participation.